My allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The public can also access this meeting via WebEx technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on Burlington Cable Access TV and video/audio recordings are being made. To access the meeting, the code is two-three-four-seven-five-two-six-nine-zero-nine-three. The password is Tuesday. The meeting hearing of the Burlington School Committee will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcasts unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. If you are participating remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen in advance and verbally, once you are identified, to speak. We request that you please turn on your camera. And just as a reminder, comments and statements are limited to three minutes. I'm going to do the equity statement. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child individual. So the first thing up is approval of the warrant. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. A vote, please.
Okay, Catherine.
I know, it's been a long day. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So that's five, and I'm in favor of it, so it's five-zero-zero. Sorry about that. Next on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from January 10th, 2023. And there were, did everyone get a copy of the revised, revised, revised? Okay, just wanted to double-check. Okay, a motion, please.
So I move to approve the meeting minutes of January 10th as amended.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I'm in favor, so it's five-zero-zero. Okay. Next item is public participation. And as a reminder, again, statements and comments are limited to three minutes. And I will alternate between virtual and in-person. I don't see anybody in person. And is there anyone virtual? All right. That was easy. The next item on the agenda is information and reports. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Matthew is here and just fresh off of his midterms, which he said he performed outstandingly, which we would expect no less from the school committee student representative, not to put any more pressure on you. But congratulations on being done, and I'll turn it over to Matthew.
Thank you for such an elaborate introduction, Dr. Conti. But right now, speaking of people who are performing well, the BHS Coffee House concert is happening, so a lot of student performers are both playing music, singing, and reciting written poetry, which I think is pretty cool. Also, the Poetry Out Loud Finals are happening tomorrow during school. And those will be taking place, and Burlington High School will have a poet laureate that moves on to the state competition. Additionally, in other events, Perry Offshar and Abby Witazek are holding a silent auction for DECA, which I mentioned last time. It is on this Thursday, January 26th. And there is a RSVP link in the DECA Instagram and on the DECA Twitter. And there's a link to the different auction items. I think there are 12, and I think it's pretty cool. The money raised will go towards the BHS DECA fund and cost for the state competition, since we have like 60 kids going. It's really, really impressive. And also, just a quick shout-out to the boys' and girls' indoor track teams, because they just competed at the state relays, the Division III State Relays. And both teams had great success. I know that one of the girls' relays broke a state record, the boys' shuttle hurdles relay broke a state record. And the boys actually won the meet in the end, so they're the state relay champions. And I just wanted to shout them out real quick, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job.
Yes, congratulations. Subcommittee reports is what's next? Any subcommittee reports? Ms. Simon?
The Burlington Youth and Family Services had their board meeting last week. And there are a couple of new members on the committee, which is nice, because a couple of people had moved out of town. And so we have a number of parents. We have the crisis counselor from the police department. We have a good group going forward, and they're doing all right. The Youth and Family Services at the moment is just barely, like, there isn't a long wait list now, which is nice to see as well. And they have some new, the interns that are there this year are working out well, so that's been really good.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Anyone else? Okay. Ways and Means, Steve.
So Ms. Kasha gave us the proposed schedule for the budget. I passed that on along to the Chair of Ways and Means, and the tentative proposed date for the budget presentation to Ways and Means was accepted for 412, I believe it was. So we're good from that perspective. And we'll work in the next week or so to put together a couple of dates for subcommittee meetings with the Ways and Means and the school committee, the school committee subcommittee for Ways and Means to talk about the budget once it gets rolling. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other announcements, anyone? Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to congratulate Julia Klein and Madison Spreadberry. I was notified by George Rakovich, the district's visual arts director, that Julia and Madison were selected for inclusion in this year's Emerging Young Artists juried exhibition, hosted annually by the College of Visual and Performing Arts at the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth. The Emerging Young Artists celebrates its 10th birthday in the exceptional artistic merit of New England's high school students through this highly competitive online exhibition and its awards. The program received submissions from 591 students, from which the juror, Dean Lawrence Jenkins, selected 120 works to be in the exhibition. So congratulations to all the students whose artwork was selected for this highly competitive New England juried expedition, but especially Burlington High School students Julia Klein and Madison Spreadberry. So again, good news there. And then, Madam Chair, I made a mistake with the agenda, so I was to put on a second reading of the Burlington High School Program of Studies. And again, it's not on there. What I was hoping is, because the high school has some deadlines that they need to meet, that if I could just get a conditional approval, we've incorporated all the changes. I will make sure it's on the agenda for the first meeting in February. But I'd just like the high school to be able to move forward. If we have to make changes, we can. But I think there's some things that they can start in motion that they need to. And again, the omission on the agenda was mine. So I'm not even sure I need a vote for a conditional approval, but I'd like to tell the high school they can move forward.
I would make a motion that we approve the, which is the Program of Studies?
Yes, ma'am.
That was presented to us at the last meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, any additional discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm in favor, so five-zero-zero.
And again, I will put it on the public agenda for next February, first meeting in February. And if, again, if there are changes that are made, we can incorporate those. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, so next is learning, equity, and thriving. Dr. Conti.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. Welcome again, Mr. Morin. We're sort of kicking off the fiscal '23, fiscal '24, oh my god, budget season.
Same problem, so.
Oh, yeah. I keep saying I've lost, I've lost two years of my life, or three years of my life, I think, with the pandemic. So we're kicking off the fiscal '24 budget season, really this evening. And we're doing it in a, in a bit of a different order than we typically do. So we're starting with the 10-year capital plan and our warrant articles. So, Mr. Morin, it's going to be a bit out of what you're sort of normally used to. We have normally put the warrant articles in at the end of the process and felt like we were really shortened our timeline to work with both the Capital Budget Committee Ways and Means and then providing information to town meeting. So the good part of changing the order a little bit is we'll have more time for those communications. The, I guess the drawback of doing it early is we don't yet have a number from Town Hall about sort of what our limitations are. And we don't yet have all of the firm numbers for the projects that we're discussing. So, but I think it's better to start now anyway, and then we can come back. So with that, I really want to turn over the conversation about the 10-year capital plan draft, and I'm stressing draft, and the capital warrant articles to Nicole and to Bob. So we can start from there. But again, this is really the kickoff of the fiscal '24 budget season. So with that, Nicole, you had some handouts for the committee members?
Yes, so I handed out both this larger one, which is the 10-year plan, and then this double-sided, which is all of the requests that we received from departments and buildings for capital projects for this year. So I'll start with the 10-year plan. So basically, on this plan, we showed last year's articles that were approved by Town Meeting. You'll see that in 2024. We haven't added the projects yet, because obviously we have not determined which ones of all the two-page requests will be moving forward yet. So once that's determined, those will get filled in there. And then any requests that aren't moved forward for this year and that will be for, like, for future years, postponed out to future years, those will be added on there, too. And then I also just wanted to note that on the 10-year plan, we're working with the town finance team to ensure that the 10-year plan also captures projects that, with anticipated borrowing commitments, like from the town's debt schedule. So we don't have those concrete numbers yet, but we're going to incorporate those into here.
And again, an example of that, Ms. Kasha, would be the Fox Hill building project.
Yes.
So when we get the number for Fox Hill, we'll place the number in the debt schedule. As many of you know, from the joint meeting that we had sometime in the past, the town is aware that the Fox Hill will be on the long-term debt schedule and has a dollar amount sort of slotted in, but we don't know sort of the exact number. But we will be asking for Town Meeting. Town Meeting has to approve the total cost of the project, even if we're going to get reimbursement from the state. So again, those numbers will be forthcoming. But what, again, what this draft is, is also a cleanup. I think we took off some projects that had been on there for a while that we weren't moving forward. So hopefully, it's a clarification.
And then for the two pages of--
I'm sorry, I just, my apologies. I just, again, with the debt schedule, again, are there sort of any questions with the debt schedule? This is the first time you're seeing it, but you want to, can certainly spend some time with it. And we can answer questions if you see something that comes up as part of our conversation.
I have a question.
If I may.
Ms. Simon?
So I'm glad, you know, to have this. This is a real big concern of mine, and I haven't had a chance to really look at it. But briefly looking at it, I don't see anywhere on our capital plan for funding for the new Fox Hill building. And I worry about where that goes. I worry that when Town Meeting looks at these, Capital Budget Committee, and they say, "Well, you didn't have it in the request." So where in this piece of paper does it say that we're going to be asking for this large sum of money to try to fit into the town's picture?
Again, through the Chair, Ms. Simon, I think we put the information that we have currently. I think the town's debt schedule has a Fox Hill number in it. I think Ms. Kasha mentioned that she's working with the town to sort of finalize that number. When we have that number, that number will be added to our 10-year capital plan. So everyone at this point, again, should have seen that in the town's 10-year capital plan. We just don't know what number to add to our plan yet, but that number is imminent. Is that, we're working to get that number.
Excuse me, I think maybe what Martha was asking is put a placeholder here, even though you don't have the number. So that, I mean, I realize that the town is aware of it, but I think it would make her more comfortable if we just put a placeholder under Fox Hill.
Again, that's a fine suggestion. We can certainly add a placeholder for a new Fox Hill. We can add a placeholder for a high school. And we can do both.
Well, I think you already have the feasibility in there, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Because you have the number, right? No, not the building, but, right.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else?
And so, and again, I just got a look at this, but for example, in fiscal '26, there's money for parking lot light replacements. And I know we did that at Francis Wyman. So is this to do that in other, at other schools? Is that what that is? Mr. Kuna is shaking his head yes, for those who can't see him. Okay. And none of the things that, and we haven't even gone over them yet, but none of the things that we got tonight for this year's possible capital requests, at least on the first half that I had a chance to look at, appear to be here. So I just, you know, so where these, I mean, I see things like teacher MacBook device replacement. Yes, that's something we know every X number of years, we're going to want to have, we're going to need a large capital investment for that. And so that's good to see that we've got that going forward. So this is a good start. And yet, like, if there's way more things on the list that we're about to look at, then there's money in that total. So some of those, shouldn't those, some of those end up in fiscal '25, '26, '27? Is that what we're going to, you're going to figure out later?
That's what we're going to discuss. And again, because we're doing this early, and we don't have a number yet, you're seeing everything that came back from building leaders and cost center folks. So just like, you're going to see every position, even though we're not going to hire every position, we're showing you everything that was requested. When we get a number, and Mr. Morin, I'm not sure when we will see that, but at some point, you'll give us a guideline for capital projects. Then you would have seen all the projects, and we're going to have to pare them down, I'm assuming, not add to them. And then I believe, again, Nicole, you can answer this as well, we would then add those to the fiscal '24 line here. And then if there are projects that we need to push out, then you'll see us push those out into future fiscal years.
Okay. So if I, I mean, to me, this is, again, this just got handed out right before the meeting. So this is more of, I think, a draft, as he said. And as we need to, we will build on it in future meetings and as we get new numbers, et cetera. So any other, Ms. Monaco?
Nicole had--
Yeah, I mean, I've seen a lot of these, and pretty much this is the basic framework. And as we go through, it's like a living document, you add to it. And so this is just the bare bones, and it will get filled in with our work this season, budget season, and budget seasons in the future.
Ms. Kasha, you had a comment?
I just wanted to note that on the bottom of the schedule, there's three little bullet points that sort of note which things are, we're aware are not on here yet. And that we'll be adding those to the schedule as we proceed.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Not now. I'll wait till we look at the other list.
Thank you.
And again, as I just stated, I'll just briefly repeat, if we go to the two-sided page. Again, this is by no means a list that we believe we can fully support. You're seeing all the requests that came in from the building leaders, from Bob's, the maintenance shop. And so you're going to see everything. We're going to talk through them tonight. Some have dollar figures attached from estimates, some don't. Bob, you can talk about both of those. And then I want to just make sure that we spend some specific time on the field study proposals moving forward. So with that, again, I'll turn it over to, again, Bob or Nicole to talk down, to speak to the warrants that you received this evening.
I'll let Bob go through the projects, but I just wanted to note that in the final column, it says like estimated cost of request. This isn't based off of like actual quotes or anything. This was just like a general ballpark of the people that were submitting the articles. So we don't have exact quotes for every project yet, so you're not seeing those there.
Thank you. So, oh, Ms. Masardo.
What's the order they're in, just random?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Mr. Morin?
We're looking, clearly, these are just big ranges. We're looking for a little bit more coned in, I'm hoping for.
Yes, where, this was just sort of what the requesters were submitting, and they're not always like the experts on getting the detailed estimates.
A little more fine-grained numbers would be appreciated.
Yes.
It's still, you don't ask, you don't get.
Mr. Morin, through the Chair, the whole point of doing this early is to get the projects out, and then we will get you the exact quotes as we get them. But again, we're trying to get more information out earlier so that we're not doing this, again, for Town Meeting at the last minute.
I totally understand. I was just giving you a little bit of grief.
That's okay. I enjoy the grief.
Keep it up, Steve, keep it up.
That's right.
So, and--
All right.
But again, Ms. Masardo's question is a great one. I just want to make sure I stress that, that once we have a number, that we will be working towards our prioritization with the committee. So ultimately, you will submit, we'll talk about priorities, because there's only a limited amount of funding. So we'll get to the prioritization.
Madam Chair? But Mr. Kuna, yes. Anyone else have a question or comment?
I did want to clarify also, if anyone is listening, that tonight's meeting was merely to show how our capital plan might look for the next 10 years and to indicate which projects, capital projects, are needed in the district. And as you just saw from this conversation, it's not finalized yet. This is something that's ongoing, but we wanted people to know about it. A separate conversation will be going on between Dr. Conti, Mr. Sagarino, and other members of the town to figure out how much money is going to be available for the various capital warrant articles this year. Tonight was not a time for the Ways and Means Committee and the school committee to be making that decision. That decision doesn't happen here. It was posted as a Ways and Means Committee tonight. So I think some people thought there was going to be some kind of agreement made, but that's not where that agreement happens. That's something that will come back to us, and we will be getting more information. But that's not what tonight's conversation was about.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Simon. So are we ready to move on to the next one? Thank you. Did you have a question or comment, Mr. Kuna?
Bob is going to go down through some of the--
You want to--
Yes.
So we'll go to the next one, and then you can just shoot on down. So we'll start with the, do you want to do the separate warrant article for the BHS?
Again, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I'm being uncoordinated.
Oh, you're going to the sheet.
So we're going to go through the warrants as presented to give you all some background as to what was submitted. Again, at future meetings, when we actually have a dollar amount to work under and more accurate bids, we will condense this list to meet that number and prioritize with the school committee. So this is just a first view, which normally we've done, again, as we're approaching May. We've even had to have a special school committee meeting at the last minute. So we're just starting this early. But because, again, we're starting this early, we don't have all the details yet. But I think we're, I'm hoping this will be better, but we can certainly, if it's not, we can, we'll figure out how to do it. We're trying something different. So Bob.
All right, so now that we're all not confused anymore, Mr. Kuna.
Well, thank you, through the Chair. So I want to echo as well, so everyone's clear. The intent of this is to showcase the warrant articles that were requested by department heads or cost centers. These are not from us. So you'll see that the requester is on here. Again, as Ms. Kasha stated, we don't have a definitive number, because the person requesting it did not get the quote on it. So we are working on those quotes, and we will return actual dollar figures. They are in no priority list or order at all. These are as we received them, and they're written as we received them. So they may not be the same title, they may not be the same description. That's just how they were presented to us. In transparency, we're sharing them with you all, so that way there's more exposure to the conversation, more exposure to the projects. And as we get quotes and move further along, depending on funding sources and whatnot, we will come down to potentially a list of warrant articles that fit your needs and the departments and districts' needs as well. So just briefly, I'm going to give an overview. So if you look at what I'm calling number one, which is the first one, not in any order, MSMS Room Configuration, Marshall Assignments, Middle School. With the increase of potential 11 new DSE students moving into Marshall Assignments, there's a need for new spaces there. So currently, we don't have that space available to us, so we will need to make or find a new space in that. That means potential displacement of current spaces, current teachers. We're not sure yet. We're looking at a few different configurations. And once we decide on one with Carrie Purchase, the principal, and also Christina Chicalini, then we'll provide more information, what a feasible number would be for that. If I could just read all of them first, and then if there's any questions, I'll answer anything I can. Number two is expansion and integration of middle school security cameras. Again, when we did the middle school in 2011, we installed cameras then. They were not part of our existing system, as they were proprietary. We have upgraded some of those cameras, but there's a request right now to replace the existing proprietary ones and also add more cameras to that system. The next one is instructional space at Pine Glen. Again, Pine Glen, along with Fox Hill, are two smaller elementary schools, and space is at a premium there. We have storage spaces that we could convert into teaching spaces. We have limited space as it is right now. So we're really looking at maximizing any space that's available to make them viable teaching spaces. The next one is Burlington High School Light Speed Amplification Systems. In our middle school and our four elementaries, we have these light speed systems. We have one here in this room, and there are microphones that can be worn or spoken into, and they provide amplification for the whole entire classroom. So not only do the teachers not have to yell, but students further away from the instructor can now hear better as well or more even throughout the whole entire room. So the high school currently does not have that, and we've had more and more needs and requests to fulfill those within the high school.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Monica has a question.
Well, I mean, the high school doesn't have any of them?
We have some. So we've bought them specifically for individual needs. But then what happens is students obviously move on to different grades, change classes. So as far as meeting the needs, it's been difficult. And then since we have an increased need for them, as far as moving them left and right to different rooms, it makes more sense to outfit the building.
I agree.
And again, I have a question. Again, you have the estimated costs, and is it, since we've purchased them in the past, I would assume we have something close to a guess, right? But the range is because you don't know how many you're going to purchase?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's not per unit. That's the number of classrooms that we would need times the cost of the unit. The next one is Burlington Early Childhood Center. Replace the two bathrooms that are there. Currently, there are two bathrooms that have been maintained but are a little bit out of date, a little bit out of size for the children that are there. So the replacement would be to obviously bring them up to code, lower some toilets, lower some sinks, make it more age-appropriate for-- lower some sinks, make it more age-appropriate for the children in the BECC. Next is Francis Wyman. There's four main stairwells, and the four main stairwell, the treads on those, looking to replace them. Next is Pine Glen, siding and soffit. I know soffit is a weird word, but soffit is the connection that, between the exterior wall of the building and the roof of the building. So that connection right there, we basically need to reseal that and replace some of those parts around the building. Not only are they deteriorating, but they're also a source for animals to get into the building. So we need to replace those.
Or insects?
Animals, insects, rodents, flying insects.
We've had bee problems.
We have had.
Did you call bee men?
Issues prior.
You want As, no bees.
Right. Next, you'll see Francis Wyman Grease Trap. In our cafeteria, again, renovated 1996, there's a grease trap that is underground in the concrete slab. So anything that comes out of the sinks then goes down into a grease trap. That grease trap is no longer functioning to its capacity, and due to the sizing of plumbing and plumbing codes, it will have to be replaced, upgraded. The concrete will have to be cut up and then repaired. So it's costly, but it's required, and it's something that we need to do. Let's see. Next, also something that we need to do, oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the high school feasibility study, so let's go to that one. We do need to do that. High school feasibility study, as you all know, we would like either to look at a repair or replacement of the high school, and we need some more help as far as determining what our next steps are. Next, you'll see that there is Memorial Fire System, BDA, which is a bidirectional amplification system. As far as fire code goes, when emergency responders go into the building, in order to eliminate any dead spots in the building, this bidirectional amplifier connects to any of their walkie-talkies and radios and allows them to talk within the building. So the system that we have at Memorial right now, installed in 2011 when we built the building, is no longer supported and is out of spec. So while it's maintained right now, next year won't be. And again, as part of fire code, we need to have that functioning, so we will need to replace that. Next, you'll see district-wide, that's as regards to the field study. We should have had something today, so I apologize for that, but what we're looking to do is, our engineer that we have hired to do a field study for all the Burlington playing fields, including the Ice Palace as well, is going to give us a report and some recommendations. We want this committee, as well as other, throughout the town, to see that whatever plan is in place or any type of findings that the engineering firm has found, that we agree to, that we want us to get used to knowing that, they're our requests that we would like to see. So once we have that report, we'll go over those recommendations, and we'll put something here for that. Next, you'll see BECC Burlington Early Childhood Center, motor room, that's a particular room down in that area, and right now it's a flexible wall, similar to what they have in Fox Hill. But that's not the design of how they're using the room currently and haven't been. So the object is, would be to replace that removable wall and actually relocate the wall to make the room a perfect size for the functions that they're using it for, and put a hard wall in its place with a door. So, next, you'll see that district-wide security cameras. So this is something that I have requested because numerous people have asked me. So while Miss Purchase did put something in for the middle school, I put this one in to cover all the requests that I had received personally from other schools. So that is just to add security cameras. It does say mostly exterior, but there are requests for interior cameras as well. Next, you'll see middle school, so classroom desks and chairs. The kids are not sitting on the floor right now, which is great, but there's no current plan in place to replace on a mass scale the desks and chairs that are within the classrooms. So we've been able to replace smaller numbers at a time, but overall, we're looking at chairs that are multiple years old, so that's just something that we want to consider. Next, you'll see Francis Wyman Air Conditioning. Now, you may remember that we've done two phases of air conditioning in the past five years. One was for the top floor. Few years back, we did one for the bottom floor. The reason we didn't do the whole bottom floor is because there is an existing air conditioning in the Sprouts area, the auditorium, and the main office. That was when the building was renovated in 1996. So while they are currently there and working, you know the story, they're deteriorating, they're getting a little bit older, harder to find parts, so it's just dumb. Now we need to put on our radar because those will fail at some point. Let me see. So Marshall Simons Field Outdoor Instructional Space Accessibility. This one is because there is limited access to the field from the back and side of the building. So the gymnasium is located on the Locust Street side of Marshall Simons, and when students and staff go out to gym class or even after-school events, there is a set of stairs only down to the field. If not, students and staff need to walk about 1,200 feet down the walkway, down the driveway, in through the gate section to then get to the field, and then obviously after their event, walk that 1,200 feet back. Now again, some students can walk down the stairs, others can't, so this is something to consider. Let's see. Next, upgrades at Fox Hill. We know that Fox Hill, hopefully there'll be a new project coming on pretty soon, but at the same time, we don't want the building to continue to just deteriorate while, while we're using it. So there definitely is some need for some painting, internal partitions, and bathrooms and so forth, which again, we're watching, but as a larger project, we still just need to make sure that we maintain those. The next couple of requests, I'll summarize a little bit because they're all related to performing arts. So Burlington High School, Francis Wyman, and another one for the Burlington High School. Again, a lot of our systems have been updated, but some of them, just parts of them haven't. So our lights haven't been fully upgraded. Our rigging systems that support the lights have not been upgraded. So while they do get inspected yearly and they do continue to function, at some point, those rigging systems become no longer supportable and then recommended to be replaced. Also, at some point, there's a cost savings potential to replace existing lights with higher wattages down to LED that are more efficient and so forth. So these are just requests that we're looking at. The next request you'll see is parking lot at the high school. This one is my own personal one that I put in just because I know, and we all deal with the parking here, between staff and students, the total number of spaces that we have and the total number of cars that are here on a daily basis, minus any snowstorms or any visitors, is pretty tight. Now, I think it's a far stretch to say that, sure, just put a parking garage in here, but something needs to be done about the parking here at the high school, because it's clearly just a lot of automobiles.
Question. So whoever designs it this next time, will it flow better than the current one? Because it's pretty crappy now.
They should. So that is something that during either design phase or feasibility phase that we need to recognize as well, too, that the flow of traffic is very important. I don't know what happened 50 years ago, but I would not say that this one was really designed properly for 50 years of growth. And just the last one is also a Burlington High School auditorium request. This is a wireless microphone system that we don't have currently. While we do have some capabilities of a wireless mic system, it's an add-on to our existing system. This is really talking about replacing the whole backend system with the new wireless mics. So again, quick overview, you're definitely going to see more of these conversations as we get more quotes. I'm sure this is going to be on many future school committee meetings for conversation, and there's always a good time to ask us questions, so please do, and we'll get that information for you.
So again, Madam Chair, this was, as Bob said, a first view. What comes next is we need a number from the town, and we need to get obviously more accurate quotes. We will, are committed to using, Mr. Moore, in the town meeting form that they like for warrant articles, so we will prepare those forms with, with backup. And again, so our work will be to further educate you on some of these projects, and then for us to prioritize them to fit under the dollar amount from town. If you happen to have other ideas for warrant articles, then again, please let us know. But clearly, this list is more substantial than the funding we will have. We're going to have to push some of these projects to, to future, to future years. And then there's always some unknown. Just to stress again, last year's town meeting approved a field study for all of the recreational spaces in town. It was the expectation that if they found any safety issues or needs for upgrade, that they would prioritize those, and because I think town meeting rightly said that they saw oftentimes from us warrant articles for field improvements, but they wanted to see sort of the whole picture in terms of what we were doing. Why is the baseball field at this point on the warrant and not a softball field and not the hockey rink? And this should be able to answer those questions. Bob said the study, we were supposed to actually receive it today, we'll get it in the next few days. We will certainly share that with the school committee and, and maybe even make that a future agenda item, and we can share it with whomever the committee would like us to share it with. It will be a public document at that point. But there should be an expectation of both the committee, Ways and Means, capital budget, and town meeting, that we're going to be working from that field study and in future years, looking to knock off projects that, that the consultant says we need to do sort of on a, on a regular basis. And so that's kind of what I would think about, and what, again, a good example of that would be if we're getting, what, eight to 12 years from an artificial field surface? We just replaced the high school, so if we were doing a 10-year plan, then in 10 years, you should see varsity field replacement as part of that capital, so it wouldn't be a surprise to anyone, anyone moving forward. And again, I think that's the type of plan we're trying to, we're asking town meeting support for Burlington High School as well.
Thank you. Ms. Monaco?
On the first page, I saw quite a number of what I would consider, excuse me, very high priority items. And one thing, I wondered when I looked at the bathrooms for the BECC, I think that that's kind of long overdue, and they're little kids, and they need appropriate bathrooms. I wonder, does the, the account for that program have money that could be used to pay for the bathrooms if we can't fit it into?
So the revenue from the BECC tuitions is, is general fund revenue?
So it all goes to the accommodated account?
Because of the accommodated, because of the structure where.
So the tuitions that are paid, we don't have any of that saved up that we could spend on new bathrooms? It would have to be a warrant article through the town?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And Mr. Paus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kuna, regarding the field study, one person I'd like to loop in as soon as possible is Brendan Egan. At the last REC Commission, we started discussing their, the budget process for REC, and their wish, I think it's a wish every year, is that there's some collaboration between schools and REC as far as field maintenance goes. And I have a call scheduled with him tomorrow about similar items, and maybe at some point soon, the three of us can have a conversation about, if that's appropriate, where that kind of collaboration can, can land.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Ms. Masardo?
I just had a question. Do we have a reasonable expectation that we'd be allowed to put a parking garage?
No.
Reasonable expectation, depending on size and setbacks, yes. And not only here in the upper parking lot, but potentially in the student parking lot as well, too. If that was a reality, then obviously we would have to invest a little bit more time into engineering drawings and, again, a feasibility study as well to make sure that we can meet that, and it would be viable for us.
Don't hold your breath.
No. Through the chair, not that everything is connected to a feasibility study, but please, this is one possible scenario, one possible scenario. Again, let's say they want to do some construction on this site, and they actually wanted to build on the, what is the teacher parking lot now, near the painted rocks? Parking structure may be one of the strategies to displace a bunch of cars to open that space up for construction. So we have a parking problem in and of itself, even with the building as it exists, that we need to think about. But I would never, or I'd like to make that decision about a parking structure in relation to potentially a larger project with this building. And I know that delays things or complicates things, but I don't want to put a parking structure in and all of a sudden have them say, boy, we need that. That's where we're going to put the new something or other. So I just think we're, we're landlocked, and we have a very tight space here, and there's really, I don't think, part of the feasibility would be to look at other places in town, but I, I believe this would be the, the place where we would need to put a renovated high school, obviously, and, and even potentially some new structures that are associated with the high school.
And Ms. Simon?
I wanted to just, I want to make a comment and a couple of questions. In regards to the amplification systems at the high school, I wanted to clarify again for folks, and you described it's something where the teacher's voice is amplified for the whole classroom, and that's very useful, and it's something, the description that other people can't see is that this is a beneficial, universal accommodation for all students. What I don't think we said, and I think it's important, is that this is also, certain students, students with certain disabilities require these devices. This is something that's required. And so when Mr. Kuna referred earlier to moving the systems around, it's because the system is required in certain classrooms because of students who have that needed service or that needed accommodation, and those could be for any number of different types of disabilities. And so the amplification needs to be in at least certain places, and the idea is that it can be really beneficial to other students as well. So I just wanted to expand the description of what that's about, and I agree with Mrs. Monaco that that's a really important thing for us to be doing, to make sure we have those accommodations and, and devices for students who need them. And I also note, I mean, there are a number of issues here that do have to do with providing access, ADA accommodations, the, the, which you called the outdoor instructional space accessibility at the high, at the middle school, it's not something I would have thought of, but it is an issue, and it's not only that it takes a long time for a student with mobility issues to go all the way down the hill and come back into the, the track or the outdoor education area, but also they make, if there's an issue with medical issues, that could be a concern. I'm not mentioning all of them, but that's, those I think are all important that we be doing. I have a question. I'm curious what a sound shell is in number 18 in the Performing Arts Department, in the Music Department at BHS. It says our stage needs updated sound shells. Does anyone know what a sound shell is? Oh, Mr. Kuna, thank you.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Kuna.
So thank you. I actually did not know what that was when the request came in, but Mr. Middleton did enlighten me. Anything that's fabric is not great at projecting sound, and it actually dampens sound. So similar to like a half shell in Boston, right? These sound shells are exactly what the state, what the name would state. They're a structure that would go behind any instruments and/or performers that are on the stage, and then they curve forward, so it projects all the sound from the back up and forward to the audience, just like that, a half shell, similar shape. So we don't have those right now, and our sound is great because it's coming through the speakers, but if you were playing a acoustical instrument, or a piano, or anything that doesn't necessarily have the amplification through itself or through the system, a lot of that sound is lost by being absorbed through the curtains and fabric material. the curtains and fabric material. So the sound shells, again, check forward.
So it's for acoustics purposes. And, you know, I'm disappointed. We just did improve the instrument storage. We got lockers. And now, were we not, just we just didn't know how many instruments there would be? We've got a great music program and it's bursting at the seams. Is that what's going on?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Appreciate the detail. So now, can we move on to the separate warrant article for BHS feasibility study at 1.5 million?
Yes, Madam Chair. Again, you just, you saw that warrant on our warrant requests. But the discussion tonight with the school committee is, what I am asking the school committee to consider is, we typically would get a dollar figure, again, from the town to fit our warrant articles under. It's typically been the last few years, about 1.4 roughly million dollars. The Ways and Means would identify a dollar amount. And then typically that is split 50% between town warrant projects and school warrant projects, as you all know. The high school feasibility, from my perspective, we have many things to do, as you all mentioned. So the high school feasibility would sort of take all of that if we were just to be limited to that one request. And I believe that is an important request to continue to make progress. I also believe that it will save the town, I have to be careful how I say this, it will allow us to request more efficient use of the town's money from having an expert give us that direction. So my sort of, what I would like the school committee to discuss tonight is, I would really like to approach that as a separate warrant article outside of the warrant articles that we need just to maintain our buildings and to keep making progress. So that is the agenda item tonight and would really, again, want you all to have that discussion tonight and for us to move forward because we're going to need to submit warrant articles relatively, relatively soon. Again, and this would, this would be a separate warrant article if the committee agrees. March 24th would be when we need to submit.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? I mean, I personally think it's a great idea to do this. So it's neat.
Dr. Conti, I think it was last meeting, like, one of the things that was approved last year was the music room floor. I think at last, was it the last meeting where you said maybe that's something we might return back as, because it could be incorporated into a larger project? Is that something we could say to sort of grease the skids, so to speak?
Again, through the chair, Mr. Foss, I think any project that we haven't started or isn't in progress, I think we could certainly reconsider. I think if we were to reallocate those funds, that would require a town, a town meeting vote to reallocate those funds. But again, if you look on your 10-year capital plan draft for fiscal '23, you'll see $450,000 from free cash that was for the music room floor. We may have a feasibility study. And honestly, they may say that the music room floor should be the first thing that we do. And so we can sort of discuss that. But again, I think we could certainly look at using, reallocating those funds and have a, again, a better sequence of spending. They might say it's not worth doing. We just need to tear down that wing and build a new wing. And I don't have the expertise. And I do think from the questioning town meeting, I think town meeting members were very supportive in regards to the accessibility part. But there were many questions about what's next and is this the right first step? And it's a lot of money. And I'd like to better answer those, better answer those questions. No one's arguing that, again, there was, there were access problems in that music room, but we have other access issues as well. And again, the context here is, we have an HVAC system that is past its useful life, that we have estimates, Bob, that please don't make me say are how many tens of millions of dollars roughly?
Eighteen to 24.
Eighteen to 24 million dollars. And then that triggers?
To do what? To do what?
I'm sorry?
The 18 to 24 million dollars to do what?
To replace the HVAC system alone. But then, as you all know, that triggers the, the ADA?
Accessibility code.
Accessibility code. And then that, again, brings us a whole lot of other costs. So, so again, the 1.5 is a significant amount of money, but we are really, get to large sums of money relative, really quickly, even maintaining this building. And if, again, if the triggers are for ADA compliance, again, then the high school, that one room project would be a part of that compliance, along with elevators and a bunch of other things. But I think that's why the feasibility study is so important because, I mean, a failure of the HVA system could be extremely expensive very, very quickly.
Ms. Monaco?
I don't think there's a lot to talk about with this. It's pretty clear that we need the feasibility study because we even need a renovated building or a new building. And left to our own devices, we'll never be able to figure that out. So we need the feasibility study. And I don't think we should, we've been worried about the high school for, I don't know, how many years now? What, 12? Trying to get SBA to help us out. But, you know, the truth is, the people in Burlington who pay taxes want the best educational facilities for their children and the, all the kids in Burlington. And it's just time. This building really needs either to be totally renovated or to be replaced. And we need to find out what's the right way to approach it. So feasibility study is simply the only way to go. So like I said, I don't think there's too much to say. This is something we have to do.
Ms. Simon?
Yeah, I agree with Mrs. Monaco. We absolutely need to be at least asking for this. And for all the reasons that she mentioned, it's really crucial. As you know, I mean, I've been, not only have we been asking the state for help to renovate or build the high school for 12 years, and that's what I, you know, we were about to start a building committee and realized what Mrs. Monaco just said, is that we don't really have the expertise to decide what's the best way to go forward. So we really need this. Even though it's a lot of money, the 1.5 million, it's something that we do need to do. I also want to clarify for people who are listening, because most, some people will remember, we just did a feasibility study on the high school. And it was an HVAC feasibility study. And it was looking at the HVAC systems and then the triggers, which we've been, keep talking about, which meant it was, it ended up being that if we did just the HVAC system, it would require us to do other, other systems. And we would have ended up with an 80 to 90 million dollar project just for that, to renovate and include those upgrades. So it's kind of confusing because we use the term feasibility study again, and it's actually a whole different creature. It's much more expansive. It's not just what are the mechanical operations? What are the legal triggers? What are, it includes that. And I would assume that they could use the data from the feasibility study, and Dr. Conti's agreeing with me. We can use that feasibility study that was done, the HVAC feasibility study. But this is a real different project that needs to happen so that we can move forward and fix what's wrong with the high school in whatever way is the best way. The only other thing I would add is that I, you know, this, the $450,000 that the town meeting approved for us to make the music room accessible, I think we've had a conversation about that a couple of times. And I think it's pretty clear to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that no one is in favor of going forward with that project until we know whether that project makes sense in the context of either renovating or replacing the high school. So it may not be that we can return that money right now to the town, but it's the kind of thing that we might end up, you know, we might not be able to use it for this particular 1.5 million dollar feasibility study request. But I think it's pretty clear that it's money we aren't going to spend until we know if that's something that needs to happen as part of a bigger BHS building project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Any other comments? Ms. Masardo?
I just want to say, I think I'm in support of this. I mean, we've tried to get state funding for this, the 12th year. We haven't got it. We can't just keep hoping and praying that something's going to change. So this seems like a really good first step and a way to actually move forward with something with the high school. So, thanks.
Thank you. I don't think you do.
Do you want a motion? Do you want a motion?
No, I think I've read the committee. I think you'll make a motion when you approve the warrants. So at some point, we'll put that in front of you. And then you can approve the warrant. And then we'll move it forward to capital budget and eventually to Ways and Means and that's the town meeting.
Steve, you have a question or a comment?
The question is actually on another warrant article. The Francis Wyman air conditioning, now that you've mentioned HVAC a little bit, does that actually cover the after-school area, the before and after-school program? Plus, is that used during the summer?
Through the chair. Multiple areas are used for before and after-school, but there is a section in the wing from the main office over towards the auditorium that the before and after-school program does use.
That's their main room, yeah.
Correct. So yeah, it would cover that area because that's existing right now. That has not been part of Phase 1 or Phase 2.
And that's used all during the summer, correct?
Most of the summer, there's a few weeks for obviously renovation, cleaning and whatnot. So yeah.
Great, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we can go on to the BPS Public, BPS District Library Programs Policy First Reading.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are joined tonight online. I think I saw that Dennis Milano, our Director of Technology Integration in Libraries, is here to, again, answer questions. And speaking to Dennis, he asked that I put this on the agenda. The policies that existed before, again, he's aware of the policy cleanup that we're trying to do. The library policy that were, the library policies that were in place actually were separate for elementary, middle, and high school. So what Dennis did was just consolidate this as a first reading. So we wanted to present it to you as a first reading tonight. At some point, again, your policy manual is being assessed and evaluated. We will bring the whole policy manual back to the school committee, and this would be incorporated into it. But again, Dennis, I think, just tried to consolidate the three different levels of policy into, into the one here. And again, this is a first reading, so it would be on the next meeting agenda. But I'll certainly, I know you just saw this in the packet, and I'll answer, or Dennis will answer any questions that you have. But we don't need a vote this evening. Dennis, did you want to say anything in particular addressing this policy?
Appreciate the introduction, Dr. Conti. I think what you said is exactly what we did. We took the previous policies, which were an elementary policy, a middle school policy, and a high school policy, and worked as a team to consolidate that. So the library team worked on this together. And they just updated some language and updated some of the, make it more consistent between the entire district.
Thank you. And Ms. Masardo, any questions?
I had a question of the, just the philosophy behind the different number of books between the elementary and the middle and high school. I just was surprised that it actually went down between, after elementary school? Just curious.
Yeah, for that, it's just a little bit different based on, that was part of an original policy that was based on the students, they actually can take out more. But it talks about, if a student wants to take home a book, they're able to check out whatever they want at that time. And if they want to come back and pick up something else, they can. It's just a matter of, you know, how often do they come to the library space? How many are they going to take with them that day? I will say that they, at the younger grades, they often ask to take a lot more. And they usually are able to. So it's, it's something that's in there just to hold to, making sure the students aren't taking too much with them on one trip to the library. But it's fairly flexible for that. We just don't want to have a situation where a student is losing any books from the school or misplacing anything. It's, it's not meant to be anything that has to do with checking them back in or fees or anything like that. There's nothing like that with the, with the limitation on the numbers.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? Ms. Simon?
I'm glad to see any policies getting cleaned up. So thank you for, you and your staff for doing this. And I appreciate also that, you know, it's based on some concepts that people in the library field have thought about for a long time. And I, it's, I think it's very well thought out and backed up. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Monaco?
I just want to say, I think it's a good policy as I read through it. And I'm glad you've brought it to us.
Yes. And I appreciate that everyone's trying to combine everything as well. We're actually trying to do that at work as well. It just makes sense to do that. So thank you. All right. Are we ready? One more? Oh, Mr. Kuna.
Through the chair. If you're able to move on to the next one, can I just make a correction? Someone just messaged me and reminded me that the before and after-school program for the past few years has been run through the middle school. So really, just the home base is at Francis Wyman during the summer, but the students themselves are at the middle school.
Thank you. Oops, thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay. Let's move on to letter to MSBA for the ARPA pandemic funds from the state.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Honestly, there was a discussion with the school committee about supporting funding, whether pothole funding or additional state budget funding to support communities that have been impacted by inflation in terms of projects that are already in the pipeline. There were some, I think some bullet items shared with me. And I tried to incorporate them in a letter to Representative Gordon and Senator Friedman. And again, I, if the committee wants to edit it, again, there's no pride in authorship here. We can certainly make edits. My suggestion, if the committee then so chooses, we can put it on your letterhead. And Ms. Bond, you can sign as chair on behalf of the Burlington School Committee. Again, it's a relatively straightforward letter. Burlington wouldn't directly benefit from this advocacy because our projects that we've entered into are completed. And our future projects, I'm hoping, will have a more stable bidding environment at that time. It's really to help districts that are really suffering from the instability in the, in the marketplace when it comes to bidding construction projects at, you know, at this time. So again, I hope I captured what the school committee was, was asking.
I read through it. I didn't see any changes that I wanted to make. Ms. Simon, you had a comment or question?
I, you know, I think it's a good, it's a good letter. And I am the person who raised it at the last meeting. And there were two things. One is that there is some state ARPA money. So there was a reference to that. And I don't, I, I think it might make sense to reference that so that we, there's some idea of where that might be coming from. And also there, it was also that in general, the MSBA does need more funding. There are schools all over the Commonwealth, including ours, who really need, you know, the reason our high school got turned down is they didn't have enough money in the pot. And that, to include in this advocacy that we add that perhaps as a paragraph. So that's the two things that I would suggest we might add to it.
Thank you.
Again, unless there's any other questions, Madam Chair, if I could work on those edits with Ms. Simon and then get the letter to you to sign. Is there a deadline, Ms. Simon? I just want to know.
There's no soon deadline, to my knowledge. But, you know, if we get it done next couple of weeks, it's probably fine. Or?
So for the next school committee meeting, I'm just trying, if you and I can? So for the next school committee meeting, I'm just trying if you and I can finish it up and then get it to, again, Ms. Bond, I can get it to you ahead of time if needed. I'm trying to think, it's February 7th, I believe, is the next?
Fourteenth, yeah. So that would be good, if we got it done by then.
Okay. So we'll do the Valentine's Day letter.
And I think Mr. Foss had his hand raised as well.
It's mine. I just noticed a grammatical mistake. Want me to tell you now?
Yeah, let us know.
We can do it on camera.
Those are easy to fix.
So, we, no, we'll make sure we can fix that.
And Ms. Masardo, or, okay, we're good. All right. Here's the one, I think, is going to have a lot of discussion. The food service update, please.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. And we have, again, gone through the bid process for a food management contract only. Again, I want to stress that this is not impacting directly our food service workers. And, again, the school committee has seen the bids. Nicole can sort of talk about the outcome. And I know there's going to be a lot of discussion. It is something I would like the district to sort of attempt for the remainder of this year, and then we can certainly discuss afterwards, after the pilot, how the committee would like to, would like to move forward. So with that, Ms. Kosh, if you could sort of discuss where we're at in the, in the process. And then, the committee did want to be involved in this conversation and the potential selection. Certainly would honor that, but technically, not necessarily sure we need a vote of the committee to move forward, but I don't want to move forward against the committee's wishes. So certainly, a vote is fine. But we've gone through a, the proper procurement process, and, again, we're just sort of having a discussion in whether there's a vote or not. Madam Chair, I'll certainly leave that, leave that to you.
And Ms. Kosh, do you want to speak first, and then?
Sure.
Have any questions after?
So, before we get into the overview of the RFP process, I just wanted to recap, like, a couple of benefits of exploring going with a food service company. The first being expanded options and more access to food for more students. Also, that the food service management companies guarantee profitable programs, which eliminates the potential risk of having to use school operating budget to fund a deficit at year-end, which occurred quite a few times prior to the pandemic, before the free mails for students was implemented, which is currently scheduled to expire June 30th of this year. And then, also with the surplus that the management company guarantees to the district, we'd be able to explore supporting other changes within the program with those funds, such as composting food waste and other initiatives that relate to food service. And just note that the committee does not relinquish any control that they currently have in terms of, like, local decisions of setting lunch prices, decisions about the sale of non-male items, such as snacks and non-milk beverages. And just so, essentially, we reap a lot of benefits and mitigate some financial risk there. And then, for the RFP process, so we had three responses from our advertisement, which were evaluated by four of you and one of our current cafeteria employees. So the technical proposal evaluations ranked the three companies with the highest ranked being Whitson's, followed by Fresh Picks, and then Aramark. And then, after the technical proposals, the sale price proposals get opened. So those were opened and reviewed, and the financial guarantee to the district for the remainder of this year, which I think it was based off of 103 days, which I think we've passed a little bit now. So these numbers would get prorated based on the, like, the time that a contract is awarded. So the financial guarantee means that the company would guarantee a profitable program with the surplus amount. And if the guarantee isn't met by the end of the year, they forego their management fees to, like, promise and reach that goal. So for the sale price proposals, the financial guarantee of the district for the remaining portion of this year for Whitson's was $90,000, which was the highest, then followed by Fresh Picks, which was $68,000, and then Aramark, which guaranteed $25,000. So as a result of the technical price proposal evaluations, technical and price proposal evaluations from the RFP process, it would be recommended to move forward with Whitson's. Whitson's is currently the food service management company in a lot of other districts in Mass: Lexington, Winchester, Wellesley, Newton, the list goes on. And some of them have had Whitson's as their food service management company. Like, Manchester's been using them since 2006, so it looks like, that sounds promising that they've renewed their contracts with them and continued to utilize them as their food service management company.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any comments or questions? Because I know I do, but I want to let everyone else go first.
I'm in favor of this. I think it was, if it was clear, the, both sides of the evaluation selected Whitson's, I was impressed with their proposal as well. And I'd like to go forward with it.
Mr. Foss?
I'm also in support of this. There's just a couple of questions in some conversations that I had since the past couple of weeks. Just to reiterate that anyone currently working in this BPS cafeterias will stay in the BPS cafeterias. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And the other question, they guarantee profitability, but we also have to pay the management fees. Is that correct?
Yes, but the management fee is already incorporated prior to the, like, the profitable guarantee. So it's not the profit less the management fee.
Does it come out of the state reimbursement for meals? Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's the only two questions I had. Thank you.
Ms. Monaco?
You want to go first?
Through the chair, I'd like to ask if this particular company is the, is one of the ones you met with at MASC. Okay, so you met with the people, and they were down there, no doubt, selling their wares, trying to get new customers?
Yes. Melissa and I both spoke with them.
I asked that question because I frankly was surprised at the choice. I had spent a lot of time going over the booklets, the presentation booklets, and that particular company was my last choice. And I did not meet with them like you guys did. I did not meet with the company like you did, but I, it was my last choice of the three, anyway. So, being a math person with a degree in math and a degree in business, I would like to understand better if we have, what's the current balance in that food services account? Something like $500,000, $450,000?
I don't have an exact...
Okay, it was a big number.
Yes.
And that's based on the reimbursement for free lunch? And what? Why have we got so much money? The kids aren't paying for the lunches. We're getting the money from the state. Where's the money coming from?
The difference with what we're getting reimbursed versus costs going out.
Okay. So in other words, we're doing really well if we've got that much money in that account. So I know Mr. Foss asked about if all the current employees would continue, and I understand that that's the intention. I have a specific question, though. What happens to the director position? Do we fill it, or do we now go without a director?
The food service management company provides that, that role now.
So instead of paying a director a salary, which is, if I can add things up in my head, probably close to the $90,000 you're talking about that they guarantee, we're basically paying them instead of having our own food service director. And what happens to the person who is the assistant, who was, I think, hoping to have the job? What happens to that person?
Well, I think that we would certainly look for other opportunities in the, in the district. And we haven't really discussed too much about what this would look like. And because this is a pilot, you know, at some point, it may even be worthwhile, from my perspective, potentially maintaining both, getting some training. If the committee, through our conversations, decide they don't want the management company moving forward, I think it'd be great to have at least someone working closely with that person. So I think we have some options. Again, if we would look, as we would with anyone in the district, we would look for other opportunities for that person to continue to, to work in the district.
So is there a flaw somewhere in my understanding, which is that we're pretty much exchanging the guarantee of $90,000 with the salary of the food services director?
No.
So, Nicole, are... So that, hold to answer me.
Go ahead.
So, no. Where's the profit? Okay, we start with what we have in the account, and we're going to not hire a food service director. Instead, we're going to, we're going to pay this company to take on that role. And they're going to guarantee us what? That we're going to get back the 45, 46, whatever we're paying them, plus that number again. Where's it coming from? Where are we going to get that? In savings because they can buy food more cheaply?
I think it's a combination, Mrs. Monaco. And again, I'm a little bit out of my area here, but I think participation is also a factor here as well. And I think that...
But it's free. Lunch is free. It's going to be free for the whole term of this partial contract.
Right. But the more students that participate, the more reimbursement we get, even for the, even for the food that's being provided for the length of this contract. That is my understanding. So if we, if we serve, I know we're not selling lunches, but if we serve more lunches, then we would get more, or more reimbursement back towards the, towards the account. And I think they would...
So you're counting on this company doing a better job than a food services director and enticing more children to come and buy this food?
Correct.
And you probably are also hoping that their savings in purchasing food will not result in diminished quality. Because clearly, if they're buying for less money, it's either the benefit of bulk ordering, or they're buying less expensive food. It's one or the other, or both combined. I don't know which. But anyway, all that, just to say that I know this is going to pass, because I know there are three members of the committee that are determined, and I don't know about the fourth member. But I'm not going to vote for it, because I think it's not, I understand it's only the rest of this year. We can erase the whole thing and go back the other way. But I think this is a very, to me, it's very disappointing that we're going in this direction. And I do not see it as a cost savings. I see it as a substitute, that we're going to pay them instead of paying our own director. And I oppose that, and I will be a no vote.
If I could just make one comment?
Ms. Kosh?
So, just to be clear on, like, how food service management companies make their profits, USDA regulations do not allow them to mark up any costs. So any labor, food supplies, any of that, instead, they earn their money through their management fee to allow for transparency regarding their method of income and to avoid companies cutting corners on nutrition programs designed for, for students.
But the same thing would happen with our own director.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know what you mean.
That's okay, Nicole. I've said enough.
Okay. So, again, she did address some of the questions that I had as well. But just going through everything that I wrote down initially, it may be a repeat of some of the questions and other comments people made. But, so we're doing, it's $45,000 for the remainder of the year to get these people on board, right? What's the annual cost? Because I didn't get, I asked if I could get a PDF version of the bid, but they didn't send one. So I didn't get to look at anything, so I feel a little bit at a loss. Do you know what the, what is the annual?
I don't have that in front of me right now. I think it was based, that is based off, I want to say 103 days, but I can follow up with you on that.
Okay. And then you answered the question about where the money's coming from, right? Well, double, but just double-checking on that. And then, I think I heard that they felt they could save us $90,000 for this back half of the year, the rest of this year. Is that correct?
That's the, their financial guarantee is a $90,000 surplus from the date that they come in through the end of the year.
So again, I'm trying to understand where that number's coming from. Because as, you know, I was asking the same question, that they're not counting what we'd saved by not paying our current food services director. That's not in the factor at all as part of our savings. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so that answered that question. And then, do we get samples from other districts where we saw where their improvements came from, or that they increased how many students were purchasing meals, whatever? I, you know, I didn't see any numbers like that. There was no presentation made to us. And I still think if we decide to move forward, which, again, I think we probably will, but I'd still like to see a presentation from them, from the success stories from, again, a Lexington or Winchester, somebody. I just want to see, here's what it was before, here's what it is now, here's how we made the changes, here are the different foods we're now offering, because they're supposed to be offering more variety. I just want to see the proof in the pudding versus someone just saying, I mean, you know, I, you can have companies that come in and say, we're going to save you, you know, $90,000 a year, or hundreds of thousands of dollars a year over what you're currently paying. But if no one's showing me where that's coming from, or they don't know what we do or our background, you can say anything you want. But if I'm not showing you my numbers, and you're not coming back to me and showing me your numbers to prove to me where that's coming from, then it's hard for me to leap 100% into something without having some sort of solid thing to look at, showing there's proof in the pudding from these other communities. And I haven't seen that yet. So again, I would like to kind of have a presentation, even if it's after the fact, if they're willing to do that. Also, what are the consequences if they don't meet the savings? So, in other words, they promised us the $90,000, and they don't fulfill that?
So they, if they do, if at the end of the school year, they don't fulfill what they've promised, they forego their management fee. So we wouldn't pay them their management fee.
So we wouldn't pay them at all?
Correct.
So it's not like we get a percent off, or, so they were $90,000, and they didn't save us what they said, we don't pay them? Okay. And then, my other question, too, was, you know, the staff in general, we're not going to be affected, but I wanted to know what was going to happen with Carrie as well, because I know she's from my... Because I know she's, from my discussions with her, she is very interested if we were to move forward and, you know, replace the current position that's open. You know, she's in, I didn't know what the process is, if you were posting. But at this point, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, I would think that we would need to maybe create another position to, who's gonna liaise between us and the food services company, right? So I don't want it to just be, they come in and, like I said, I know we have our choice on food and setting our price and all that kind of stuff. But again, who's gonna manage and liaise? Maybe that's a position that we create or move somebody into if it makes sense. That's just a suggestion. Also, I assume we were provided references in the RFP. Again, I didn't get a, did we call any of them?
Yes, so like I reached out to colleagues that I know in other districts that have those. And there weren't any negatives.
Okay. And then do we know of any other districts who participated and dropped out? And why? I mean, I know people don't wanna share that, but-
Like ones that brought on a food service management company and then reverted back to an internal program? I can't think of any off the top of my head.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm sure they're not gonna volunteer that either, but-
Oh, no, I wouldn't, but-
Okay. So at some point, I know we had asked this question before. But again, if they come in with a presentation, is it possible to maybe get some samples of the improved food or just examples of the variety that they're offering that maybe we're not now? Just something to, you know, make us feel more comfortable. And I realize that this is, again, until the end of the year and we don't, we're not signing on for years and years and years. And I think that maybe we can benefit from, you know, playing around with this a little bit and just seeing what they can bring to the table. Maybe we pick up some good tricks or maybe we decide that's what we wanna do and continue to move forward with them year after year. I just had a lot of questions that I wanted answered. And again, I appreciate you entertaining them.
Yeah, I think that they'd definitely be willing to come before you guys and give like an initial presentation and even updates throughout the year on how things have changed or increase in participation and whatever else. And also, if you do wanna review like the proposals also, I can give you copies after the meeting.
Okay, appreciate that. And Ms. Monaco?
Well, again, excuse me, just, we can also have Madam Chair, some students maybe come in as well if you'd like to hear directly from them.
That would be great. Yeah, I mean, anything that helps, you know, us buy into this, so to speak. Any other questions?
I just wanna say that, I think you all know I'm super excited about this. But the proposals we did get addressed, I think, almost 90% of your concerns. There was multiple tables of the increased participation in specific districts that we could call and we could verify. There was all the sample menus that really, the sample programs of them coming in and doing the taste testing with the kids, getting the kids involved. That's how they increase the participation. That's how they get more kids to do it. That's how they vary the menus and get kids outside of their comfort zones. So that's all in the proposal that I could share in my book or if we have extras. I think those were really, really valuable. And Whittsons was my top choice. Fresh Picks was a very close second, so I'm happy with either one. Yeah, I'm obviously very much in support. And I think, I can't even imagine a scenario where we really turned down that $90,000 guarantee for the year. I think that's a huge win, taking nothing else away. My son doesn't buy lunch. He doesn't, I mean, he doesn't, nobody buys lunch. He doesn't, he won't eat the free lunch. So I think I would love to see this move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Simon?
I also, I do feel like there's a couple of unproven assertions that got put out. And number one, the $90,000 is not a, we hope we'll send this. It's a contract. It's a guarantee in the contract that they're offering to sign with us. And also, there was one other thing, but I just, oh, I know. And then in terms of having somebody relate to us, it's not gonna be some corporation that interfaces with our staff. It's gonna be a person from the company that they're gonna assign to our district. So that person will be the food, hold that role and be interacting with people. So, I mean, I did speak to another person who works in our cafeteria and has done it for many years, who is kind of excited about some new things coming in. So I know it's kinda scary, it's change for people who've been doing this in a certain way for a long time. But some people, I think, are interested in seeing what else we can learn from another group.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. And Ms. Monaco, I think you said you had a couple more questions.
Yeah. But we keep talking about $90,000. Over what? What's it, what number are we increasing by $90,000? If at the end of the school year, we, on our current method, had X, the implication is we will now have X plus 90.
Yeah, so basically, the start date of their contract, the balance in our account, that's the starting point, and they're guaranteeing an additional $90,000.
From the starting point of the contract. So if we didn't have them at all, would our balance go up in that amount of time? Getting the reimbursements we're getting?
I mean, it depends. There's rising food costs and depending on the participation and all of that, so.
I guess, I, so one thing that I guess kind of set me off with this is when we first started to talk about it, I had asked for presentations, tastings, et cetera. And none of that happened. So now, when I hear things like $90,000 of income, over what? We don't know. We don't know what our balance would be at the end of the year unless I'm missing something. So how do we know if we've made the $90,000? And then in addition to that, when do you have to decide or when do we have to decide on renewal? You know, if this works great and everybody wants it, then you don't really care how quickly you have to renew. But if, you know, if we're up in the air about it, how much time do we have before we have to decide on renewal? And let's say that this nebulous $90,000 that I can't pin down because I don't know what we're adding it to, if they don't make the $90,000, will next year's number be different?
So a lot of those details get worked out in the contract. So for instance, like a notice for renewal would be a term of the contract that would, both parties would mutually agree on. So if, I guess, if you have thoughts on that, if you wanna let us know before we work those details out, we can, we can make sure that the committee is comfortable with like a date for a decision on that.
Is the contract up at the end of our school year? I mean, I guess I-
So the way that this was advertised was through June 30th of this year with two one-year options to renew.
I would like a document, an email, an explanation, a binding explanation of $90,000 in addition to what? Is it our starting balance? I don't understand it and I don't get it. So I would like the company to explain that. I also, I know you may or may not need it, but I am also requesting that we take a vote on this because I want my vote on record.
Can I-
Madam Chair? Can I clarify the 90?
Yes, Ms. Masardo.
So pretend today, we have a half a million dollars in that account. We could lose $90,000 we have in the past, correct, Nicole? Like we could be, end the year with $410,000. If that happens, we will not pay this company. If we do not make it all the way to 590 by the end of the year, we will not pay this company. I mean, so if we keep our director, we could go all the way to 300. We could go anywhere. We could, you're right, we could end with 650. And that's still completely possible. They'd be thrilled if we ended with 650. And then next year, I imagine they would guarantee more. I don't know how that works, but that would be something to find out. But we have in the past lost money on student lunches, and this is a guarantee that we will not do that.
Based on our current number, on what day?
Nicole just said that.
The day, the start date of the company coming in.
And it's gonna be prorated, too, based on how long we take to tell them.
Right.
So if we decide to take a vote tonight and we move on, then it's as of when you inform them.
Okay.
If we wait for another two weeks, and I believe we're already behind when we told them we were going to inform them, we're losing, you know, that time, so.
And the salaries come out of that very same account? So by not paying a $90,000 salary or a $70,000 salary or whatever the salary is, we are automatically having that profit?
No. But it-
Their numbers, they don't lie.
Right, I think what they're trying to say, though, is that savings from not paying the current director is not factored into the 90,000. But that's what they're, that's what Nicole said.
Well, I haven't seen that in writing.
Madam Chair? You understand where she's coming from on the salary?
I haven't seen anything in writing.
I think that what, again, if I'm not, if I'm paraphrasing incorrectly, let me know. But I think you would feel more comfortable if you knew the $90,000 wasn't coming from, again, our not paying our current-
Well, that's one piece of it.
Director, that's a piece of it. So she wants to have something in writing saying that that doesn't count towards the 90. So the remainder of what we would have paid our director does not count towards the $90,000 savings. That's what I think Chris is trying to get in writing. Am I correct?
And I'm also-
And the rest, but-
But I'm also trying to figure out how you can base that $90,000 on what's in our account today. Just that, okay, forget it. It's gonna pass anyway, so.
So, you know, Ms. Simon?
I wanted to add two things. One is that every year that I've been here, we've had to, except for the COVID years, we've had to supplement the food service budget from other funds.
I think it was about $50,000. Was that the number a couple times?
30, 40, 50,000. So we have been going over budget with our current system. So I just wanna lay that out. So we have a company that's willing to sign a contract to guarantee us that we won't have to do that by a certain amount of money for this year. And it would be prorated, but whatever. And the other thing is that we're now, I feel, getting into talking about writing contracts, which I don't feel is the purview of the school committee.
You can read them, Martha.
And absolutely, information, can I finish, please? I think it's fine to ask for information. And I'm pretty sure that Dr. Conti and Ms. Kasha will give you all of that information. And so I think that's, you know, I'm sure they'll be able to answer those questions. Thank you.
So Nicole, I, again, in our conversations, I think you'd rather inform these people sooner rather than later because I think there was 20 days or something that was discussed. Am I correct?
Yes. In the RFP, we said like that the district intends to award a contract within, I think it was 15 days, 15 business days.
All right, and what day are we at now?
The date the proposal was received. And those were from January 3rd.
Okay. That's good enough, right. So, and again, I think you stated that you didn't need a vote, but you wanted the support of, correct? Do you feel you would prefer we take a vote? I, you know, we can go ahead and take a vote. But for me, if we take the vote and move it on, I do wanna make sure that my questions are addressed. Like in particular, like I said, I wanna know, you know, what are we going to have a liaise? What's our plan if, you know, we move forward in terms of the future beyond the end of the school year? I just wanna make sure we have a plan in place. You know, I still think even, I feel we need a liaise. I mean, even though they're onsite and there's a manager, I just still feel like we need to have someone in charge of managing that. And again, I don't know if that's part of, I don't know whose responsibility that is.
Again, Madam Chair, just quickly to that point is, if you wanna make a true decision at the end of the year, then I would see keeping someone on for the second half of the school year makes sense. If the committee doesn't wanna move forward with the management company, then we would, we should also have a plan and option B. So I certainly appreciate some of that. But I think we can work on that. But again, I, again, given Mrs. Monaco wanting to be recorded, then I would suggest that you do take a vote on this. And then, and then we can, we'll move forward, making sure that we answer your questions. And I do think we should have a more detailed presentation once we have experience with this company towards the end of the school year.
Well, I would like a presentation before that, though. Honestly, I want-
I think once we have some actual experience to share. Again, I think it's gonna take at least a couple of weeks to get up and running.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, I want the presentation not to be on what they're doing for us, but what they've done for other people. So if we could get them in, if we, again, we're voting on this tonight to move forward, then I want something the next couple of meetings for them to come in with a presentation from other school districts that they've done the same thing for and the success stories and all that. I just wanna see it sooner than the end of the year when we're, you know. And then, you know, at the end of the year, of course, I would like a presentation on what they've done for us, right? So that we can make an educated decision on moving forward. If that makes sense, right? Okay, so let's go ahead and we'll take a vote. Do I have a motion?
I move that we move forward with the food service vendor RFP
I'll second.
With Whittsons, Connor Group.
And I'll second that.
And you seconded it, okay. And any additional discussion? I think we already discussed it enough. Okay, and I've been requested to do a roll call. So Ms. Monaco?
No.
Okay. And Ms. Masardo?
Yes.
Ms. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Foss?
Yes.
And I will, I'm on the fence. I will say yes because I wanna see what they have to offer. So we have four yeses and no and no abstentions. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And the next item is facilities finance. Mr. Conti, Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Nicole shared with you as part of your packet the budget calendar. I'm trying to find it in my packet. Mr. Moran, that was shared with you as well. And again, you said we're all set there. We still need to schedule some Ways and Means Subcommittee meetings. I believe the Subcommittee is Ms. Monaco and Ms. Bond for the Ways and Means. So we'll make sure we get you those dates. They tend to be in the evening, so that can work out. Nicole, there was another meeting that you had inserted in there. On what date?
Yes, so there's one special meeting scheduled for March 21st, which would just be dedicated to just budget session. And then once, like every, if you guys are okay with all of these dates, then I'll go ahead and coordinate with which departments can come on which dates and give you guys an updated schedule of that.
I will say upfront, the only thing for me that would interfere is my mom getting out of rehab and having to go to North Carolina. And I could try and participate remotely if needed. Okay?
And again, certainly that's a priority. And Ms. Masardo, I think we were trying to do Fox Hill building committees on some of the opposite Tuesdays so that there may be a conflict with that one particular date.
That's fine, yeah, I think we're only doing that once a month, so maybe we can go in between. We only have one set up.
Mr. Moran, do you have a question or a comment?
The seventh is, yeah.
For the Subcommittee meetings with Ways and Means, I think we've done early evenings in the past, and those would work for us again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So we want to move on? Are we good? We don't need a vote?
No, just, again, we'll be getting you more details as to who's presenting.
Okay. And then the next item is the Fox Hill Building Committee?
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. Just, we'll give an update. We have, I think, some designer progress going on. So Bob, if you want to speak to that, or certainly, Ms. Massardo?
I may ask others who attended, but we did have a designer selection process meeting on the 17th, which was part of the MSBA's process. And there is a second follow-up meeting on January 30th. We did also have an SBC meeting last week where we met, just to discuss some topics that are going on, part of it being the designer process. We discussed a new member that we added to the committee and general terms regarding our website that we'll be discussing at a later term, and just other processes regarding, I'm sorry, some subcommittees that will be forming or starting to meet shortly, so...
So I did want to make one comment. Melissa and I were able to observe the lunch at the Memorial School. And I think she'd probably agree with me that when, when, if we move forward with Fox Hill and designing the cafeteria...
We have some comments.
There's certainly things that we need to do very differently than what we're done at the Memorial School. And I want to make sure that we do talk to the cafeteria personnel and what works for them and what doesn't work before we design. Because my understanding is a lot of things got done after the fact. I think there were some covers that had to be specially designed. And, you know, just a lot of things that, as far as the functionality, you know, it would make more sense to maybe make sure we involve some of those people in the actual process. Maybe you did the last time around, but I'm not sure if their voices were heard. Yes, Ms. Monaco?
Was your pizza served on a Styrofoam plate?
Yes. No comment.
And the salad?
Yes, yes, we were.
I just have some comments on the school building committee. We voted on the three designers. It was, our top choice was the top choice of the full designer selection panel. And it was quite a wide differential. So the bottom two designers declined to interview next week. So we tried to decline the single interview, but the state would not let us save the hour and a half. So we will be interviewing the one candidate next week. So I'm excited about that group, and hopefully we'll move forward from there. Just to also provide a little more detail on Bob, we added a new voting member to the school building committee, Jennifer Priest, who's been on the committee, but there's some weird, we, there's, nobody remembers who voted on who's the voting members, but now we have 13 voting members. I think that is... And we did vote actually to move forward with a bunch of consultants, just to kind of move the process forward. These are like land survey samples that we would need for the feasibility study. So we're moving forward with all of those while we pick our designer, just to kind of keep ahead of the process. And those, we chose those designers as well, so...
Thank you. All right. And next item is the BHS update.
Again, Madam Chair, this is just a standing item, just to keep on the front burner, that we have a lot of work to do with Burlington High School. I think our next objective here, we've already discussed, is to put a warrant out for a full feasibility of the high school. I think as we move forward, then we would create a separate school building committee for Burlington High School, working with a, essentially a project management firm, similar to Dorn Whittier, that is taking on that role with Fox Hill. And I think that would provide us some expertise and direction moving forward. So again, that's the intention. Bob, I'm not sure if there's anything specific to the high school that is happening, again, right now, other than we're awaiting the feasibility, the field feasibility study. And as soon as we receive that, that we discussed, we'll make sure that you all get copies of that.
Thank you. All right, so that's it for our regular items. We do have a need to go into executive session. So under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, seven to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, purpose seven. The Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A, 22 FG, to review the school committee's July 19th, 2022, and August 16th, 2022, executive session, meeting minutes, and votes may be taken. So the school committee will only return to public session for the purpose of adjournment. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion and roll call? Ms. Massardo?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
And Ms. Monaco?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. We are in executive session.